Pastor Greg, could you please do the invocation today? Or unless there was somebody else designated? Okay, go ahead Pastor.
All right, that's been our heads. Father God, thank you for a lot of things. I want to thank you for the election. Thank you that we have a peaceful transfer of power in our country. Thank you that it's kind of fun to be an American and put your vote in and see who wins. Lord, I do want to say thanks for everybody who ran here in the city and all through the country. They're pretty high level ideas and great ideas. A lot of people got their voices made known and people have a chance to think about them for the future. So, you know, thanks for everybody here who ran. I know it was tough in some areas, but you know, it's a pretty high privilege to run for anything in the city and to be first among thousands and thousands and thousands, just to be considered is a big deal. So, thank you for them. Thanks for this country. We're really grateful, God, to be in this country. We're grateful for the protections and the blessings we have from our founding fathers. And tonight would be a good meeting and a blessed new year. I ask these things in Jesus' name, amen.
Chief, can you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance today? Make your hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you guys all for being here. We have a busy agenda. Okay, so Ms. City Clerk, the roll call.
Councilmember Montero.
Present.
Councilmember Patterson. Councilmember Reyes English.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Manning and Mayor Vargas.
Here.
All right, thank you ma'am. Councilmember Reyes English has a presentation tonight on Hawthorne Heroes. Go ahead, councilwoman.
Good evening, welcome. This evening, it is my honor to provide recognition to, I believe, a couple of individuals, four, four individuals, from the Marriott Hotel across the street. On September 6th of this year, we all know that there was a plane crash that occurred right outside our city hall on 126th Street, just at the parking lot of Marriott Hotel. The four individuals that I'm going to recognize this evening are considered heroes. They provided aid, they secured, actually, they first secured and provided aid to the two passengers, well, one passenger and pilot on that day. And let me just make mention some remarks from our airport manager to our four heroes and to the support of the Marriott Hotel employees that are here this evening. Basically, he is saying that he's grateful for all the hard work of our police department, LA County Fire Department, our Public Works Department, the FAA and the NTSB, who ultimately worked together to assist those injured, including our employees at Marriott Hotel, secured the scene and obviously conducted the investigation to restore our city's city services as soon as possible. And with that, it is my privilege to name the four here. And I'll read here a proclamation. I'm going to try to enunciate your last names correctly. Forgive me already if I don't. Josua, Josue, Josue Gonzalez. Where in the evening of September 6th, 2024, a tragic incident occurred at the Town Place Suites property in Hawthorne, California, when a single-engine Piper Comanche aircraft crashed into the parking lot. The aircraft caught fire upon impact involving both the pilot and passenger. Whereas, security officers, Josue Gonzalez, was on duty with Trinity Executive Solutions, demonstrated exceptional bravery in the face of this critical situation. Josue prioritized the rescue of the unconscious pilot despite hazardous circumstances. And whereas Josue's actions during this distressing event exemplify remarkable courage, selflessness and a strong commitment to the safety of others. Therefore, he reflects the true spirit of heroism. May this proclamation stand as a lasting tribute to Josue's swift actions and unwavering commitment to the protection of others. And it's proclaimed this day, the 12th day of November 2024, signed by myself, the mayor and the city council. And I'm also, pretty much it's the same language, but the other individual was Karen Quehnat Getano. And then Chris Hernandez. Yeah? Don't be shy. I know, putting you guys on the spot. And Kayla Correa, yes? Can I have you just come up real quick to the podium just to provide just a quick remark? And then we're going to gather here in the middle for a photo. Yes, thank you. Kayla, you want to say just a quick remark? Chris?
Thank you very much for honoring us. We appreciate it.
We appreciate you. Thank you. Anyone else?
All right, I wrote something. I'm nervous, so bear with me. I just want to say thank you guys so much for taking the opportunity and the time to honor us today. We are expressing our heartfelt gratitude, you know, to you guys, the city of Hawthorne, for this recognition. It's an honor to be here today. And I'd like to also take a moment to acknowledge, you know, the recent plane crash and the extent of my thoughts and prayers to all those that were affected as well, to all those that you mentioned. I'm incredibly thankful to be able to work for the Marriott and to have a supportive team that's able to come and support us as well. So, thank you guys, shout out to you guys. And it's an honor to be able to represent the city of Hawthorne and to be citizens of this city and to be able to have an opportunity to save people. So, we're just really thankful and thank you guys so much for having us.
Absolutely. Anyone else? No? Okay. Let's go ahead and come into the center here. Come on into the center here and then I'm going to give you your certificates and we're going to take a picture.
All right, thank you guys. I'll knock, I will now call on Housing Director Kimberly Mack for her second presentation. Ms. Mack, please proceed.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tim Manning, Mayor Vargas, excuse me, Mayor Pro Tim Manning and council members. I am a part of the HBC Committee, the Hawthorne Business Connect. My name is Chantel Dixon. Anna Side. With me is Kimberly Mack. She is the manager, she is the director of the Housing Department. At HBC, our mission aims to create all encompassing opportunities. Excuse me, all encompassing opportunities for businesses to collaborate with the city to create an open line of communication that establishes and maintains economic stability for the city. Our goal at HBC is to guide prospective entrepreneurs through a streamlined startup process, to help existing businesses navigate the business renewal process and to provide services that will help each business reach their maximum profit. The founding members of HBC Committee is Von Norris, our city manager, myself, business license manager, Kimberly Mack, Director of the Housing Department, Brenda Williams, Recreation Supervisor for Community Services, and Maria Maherik, the Senior Planner from Planning. Together, we brainstorm and come up with ideas on how we can serve the businesses for owners of the, excuse me. And to progress the business of Hawthorne's business owners as we are all proud that we have made this effort thus far to boost our local businesses with recreation, with recognition for their service, the city residents and those who travel to our city for goods and services. We celebrate our proprietors as with the milestones that we have with B and R Burgers. They celebrated their 30th anniversary here in the city of Hawthorne. We'd also love to welcome our businesses and we encourage the businesses to take part in our ribbon cutting ceremonies. As you can see, one of our pictures there is the Artistry. It's one of our first retail cannabis businesses. And they provide local medicinals, but they also provide a lounge where it's safe to partake in what they offer in a safe environment. Also, new to the city of Hawthorne, I love acai. There, they sell healthy smoothies, juices and acai bowls. Our last picture highlights Rosecrans Veterinary Clinic. There, they take care of our pets by offering preventative care like wellness exams, vaccinations, primary care, dentistry and general surgery. Please feel free to stop by our local businesses and show support for the Hawthorne Business Community.
Good evening. So continuing, we also thought it was very important to offer an educational aspect when providing services to our new businesses and entrepreneurs. In a collaborative effort with, effort with departments and the city council, you know, as you know, this committee was the brainchild of Ms. Reyes English. And Mr. Patterson also, Councilmember Patterson, said, you know what? We need a quarterly event for our businesses. And so, we did that. We had a quarterly educational services at the Marriott Across the Way. We had our wonderful planning director give us a great presentation. We also had the Small Business Administration. Small Business Administration provide us with services about how to acquire grants and loans and what processes are required to establish a business. And also how to partner with other entities that would help them write their business plans and be really successful at becoming an entrepreneur or making their small businesses better within the city. We also had the California Department of Tax and Fee Administration, because everyone knows that taxes are very important. And we never want to get behind in that. So, they talked about sales tax, collections and reporting, which is all very important. All of those ideas of course were the committee's ideas. So, we didn't have the opportunity to really survey the businesses to see what they were interested in. But we just wanted to get something out there so we can start a relationship with our businesses. Because that's been lacking in Hawthorne for a while. One of the things we thought might be helpful would to be create a brochure, the Jewels of Hawthorne, so that people could know what Hawthorne has to offer. You see what's going on in Inglewood and everywhere around us. We want people to know that Hawthorne has some great establishments as well. So, we put out an application. We received 36 applications. We received, actually, we received 32 applications and we accepted 26 that were eligible that would be put in this booklet. They will have to have a brick and mortar. So, that means that you'll see a picture of their business, their logos, where they're located and why they want to be in the city of Hawthorne, why they chose the city of Hawthorne. This should be coming out this year in December, so I'm very excited to launch that in hopes that other businesses will also want to be advertised and have people come to their establishment to increase their profit margin if nothing else. What's next? We've had quarterly events that were on an educational level. Now, we want to have some fun. So, our last event will be a Business Social at Medici's, which is also another business located within the city of Hawthorne, right across the street. On the Business Social, there will be no presentations, no taking notes. You get to eat some refreshments, talk, network. Businesses can partner with one another, get to know how they do business, how they became successful. And then we also, as the staff of City Hall, get to meet these business owners and find out what they need from us and get a face-to-face conversation, the old school way, right? So, that's where our plan. And in doing so, in preparing for next year, knowing that teamwork and collaboration is so important, we couldn't do it without the other departments. We couldn't do it without your input. And we can't do it without the businesses' input. We launched our very first survey. Businesses can just use their smartphones to click the QR code and let us know what they're interested in. That way, we'd have a better shot at acquiring more businesses to see what they want, have better relationships with everyone and to really, you know, have this committee go where it should be led, right? And we want people to participate more than next year, so that is our goal. We want to provide ways for businesses to feel inclusive within the city of Hawthorne and not just set apart or not just contacted when things are needed of them. We want to provide that administrative support. We want to get rid of some of the red tape that makes it hard for them to stay here or come here. We want to support them by maybe offering a business-to-business mentorship program, right? We have a lot of dreams and a lot of goals that are still yet to come, but that is our plan for next year and we look forward to working with you with it. And that's our presentation. We'd be happy to answer any questions.
To the chair, thank you. Well, first of all, thank you so much for a Business Connect briefing. I always look forward to hearing from departments to see how we're doing, how we're doing and more importantly, how we're growing. I'm thankful for everyone's contributions to the efforts on the purpose why we implemented something like this. And you hit that right on the nail when it talks, when you talked about processes, how better to process our businesses that want to do business in Hawthorne. They want to be able to, you know, streamline everything as quickly as possible. I know we're not trying to jump in front of the others, but there's just a better way in a sense when they have one-on-one discussions with the actual departments and they're having, you know, assistance immediately versus having to wait. And so, for me, that's very important. I know council members feel the same way because, you know, they're spending a lot of money just to implement a business and to get started. And, you know, the last thing we want is to hold them up. So, I appreciate that. I'd like to see more of not just the Business Social, but more information that could be provided to our businesses because I think little by little, they're catching on and hearing what we're doing. And they're participating, they're coming. And sometimes, you know, there's a husband-wife and we have to, you know, one works over here and one works here. And so, we just have to collaborate, make sure that everyone has enough time to just come and see what we're trying to do and hear what they have to say because a lot of them do have questions and concerns that could be answered immediately there at one of our, you know, briefings. So, I appreciate your time. Thank you for what you're doing. I don't know whether council members want to say something.
Thank you Kimberly and Ms. William. Business Connect, you know, I think is a blessing for our business because we needed to connect with them, right? Because we know that Hawthorne, we want to be business friendly. And that is a step forward that we took to make sure that businesses are welcome, that they know the process, you know. I myself, I attend several of those workshops, you know, from the licensing to like the taxes to everything. So, it was very good and very well planned. So, I have to say thank you, thank you to all the committee because I know you guys have been working hard and even on the weekends, you know, have to go to those grand opens. So, thank you very much for that. But I think you guys, it's on the right direction, right? Because now we need to find out more about what the business needs, especially the small business. Because they are the backbone of the American economy. So, we need to make sure that also they feel welcome. And because sometimes it's a mom and pop, you know, so we need to give them the help. Especially, you know, to give them all the opportunities that we have here in the city of Hawthorne, you know, those grants that we provide, you know, the facade improvement, the business website, all of those grants that is out there, so to make sure they know how to do that. So, and you have been very, very instrumental in doing that. So, again, this is great. And to the end of the year, a social is very welcome. So, I think to make more connection and to make sure that the business telling us what we need to do for them, right? Because they are here. They're the one who is a bread and butter of our economy and also even for our coffee, right? The revenues that's coming through sales tax. So, we need to make sure that they're welcome and that they're going to stay here forever. So, thank you. Appreciate that.
Through the chair, should I say something? Yeah, I definitely appreciate the presentation and there was a lot of great ideas that you posed. You know, Hawthorne, one thing I tell a lot of businesses and people in and outside our city is that Hawthorne does have a great story that needs to be told. A lot of businesses in the city of Hawthorne do well, but companies outside the city, maybe originating in another state, don't really understand all the successes that certain businesses have in our city. And so, like our Costcos, Starbucks, our car dealerships, you know, do very well in the city of Hawthorne. And so, I think one of the things that you guys talked about, which our city definitely needs is making it easier to come in and open up. I think I spoke with the owner of I Love Acai and it took him about two years to open up in the city of Hawthorne. And I wouldn't dare place that on our doorstep, so saying that was completely our fault. Sometimes we have mom-and-pop businesses just don't understand the process. And, you know, we need to take an approach of wanting to aggressively help businesses open up in our city, whether they're novices in the process or not. You know, we want to take a proactive approach to make sure that, you know, they're supported through the process. So, definitely excited to see the ideas that you shared, see those things be rolled out to make the process much smoother for companies trying to come into our city.
Thank you.
All right, thank you ladies. Let's give them a round of applause. Oh, tell us that. All right. Ms. City Clerk? Oral communications?
Pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.3, all remarks should be addressed to the city council as a body and not to any individual council member. During oral communications, speakers shall have three minutes to state their business. The Brown Act prohibits the city council from providing a detailed response or acting upon any items not contained on the agenda. The governing bodies as a body shall have the discretion at the close of oral communications to refer any remarks to the city manager for study, investigation, report and/or recommendation.
Pat Donaldson?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Patricia Donaldson, President and CEO of the Hawthorne Chamber of Commerce. First of all, I'd like to thank the chief for allowing Hector to come to our Halloween trunk or treat. Hector was fantastic and 99% of the kids loved getting the stickers and going up to him and getting candy. We only had one child that was scared to death and would not go near him. But besides that, he, it was wonderful and thank everyone for donating candy. The other two things I'd like to mention is our Thanksgiving giveaway, which is going to be on November 26th at 1:00 PM. We'll be giving out 350 turkeys and 350 bags of groceries at the Hawthorne Memorial Center. That's again, November 26th. And then our Christmas mixer will be December 19th at the Hawthorne Chamber. And there will be food and raffles and music. So, I hope you all can make it and that's going to be December 19th, 5:30 to 7:30. Thank you very much.
Margaret Allen?
Good evening, everyone, council members. I'm just going to give a very brief report on the Resource Fair that we held on October 22nd. So, I'm going to read it, so I make it much easier. On October 22nd, the Senior Service Commission held its fourth Resource Fair, but the first since 2019 due to COVID. The fair was successful in providing a great opportunity for Hawthorne seniors, the families of seniors and their caregivers to discover and learn what resources are available to them for the purpose of making their lives a little more comfortable or get help through a rough patch or how to prepare in the event of a disaster and many other services they may not know were available to them. Twenty-eight, well, remarkable, 28 organizations sent teams to our fair to provide residents with the latest and best information available within their field of service. Organizations such as AARP, USC of the Psychology Department, their HAN Research Lab is doing a memory study on what affects for seniors and their vulnerability to scams. Metro was here on Ride, Alzheimer's of Los Angeles, Silver Sneakers, Hawthorne Housing Department, Hawthorne Police Department, we're just to name a few and to show you the wide variety of sources that were available. Del Sid Coffee donated a coffee, hot coffee service and the Kiwanis Club donated 20, I almost said 200, 20 dozen donuts. The senior service commissioners worked very hard to make this restart of the Resource Fair successful. But it couldn't be done without the help and direction from Von Norris, Kiwanis Bowie, Diane Brown, city services and staff, who were invaluable in helping to make the event go off without a hitch. There were many moving parts that were handled by city staff and the commissioners together. It was a great team effort. A special thanks to Mike Perez, Assistant Recreation Supervisor, on only his second day on the job. And he took the fair on like you've been there from the start. And to Darvis Johnson, without her commitment and knowledge of organizations and contacts participating in previous fairs, making, may bringing the Resource Fair back possible. We really had to go a lot of digging and it was quite a job. All respond, we did send out thank you notes to all the responding organizations and they all said they're coming back.
Thank you ma'am. Anybody else wishing to address the council? You need to form a line. Ma'am, if you want to address the city council, form a line.
Good evening. Hi, my name is Adriana. I actually cannot speak publicly since it's being recorded also. I do have some information I would like to pass along to the council members. members.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. My name is Raymond McHale, and I've been a resident of Hawthorne for over 40 years. I'm here today because I'm highly concerned about the new T markings that were painted on the street recently. We've been told that starting December 2nd, the police will be enforcing those and issuing citations. My issue and a lot of the residents in the neighborhood is that those markings with respects to their measurements violate the California Vehicle Code and are inequitable. Some are 15 feet long, some are smaller, and some are 20 feet long. Most vehicles do not fit in a 15-foot space, except the smallest ones. Most of us, I'm sorry, most of us, our vehicles are larger than 15 feet. After a long day at work, we'll not only have an option to park, and we will definitely receive a citation, as parking is rare and scarce. I'm forced to either sell my vehicle or to move from Hawthorne, which has been my home for most of my life, to avoid to have to pay astronomical amount of parking tickets. I have pictures and measurements right here as evidence of the different size spots. I called the Police Traffic Bureau, and they said it's not their problem. They're only there to enforce. I called the city engineer and was told it's not their problem. They are not the ones that are enforcing. It is even, even though they painted the lines, it was, if this was created to maximize the parking, it definitely did quite the opposite by discriminating against any vehicle larger than 14 feet or so, which is the minority, and eliminating parking for a majority of residents. At this point, it just seems that this is a revenue stream and not created in good faith. I asked if they can give passes to vehicles that are parked correctly between the lines and have both wheels inside the lines, but do not fit completely with their bumpers, and was told no. So now, if this is not addressed or corrected, at least 50% of us or more will unfairly and unjustly be given tickets weekly, if not several times a week. I urge the city council to take a look at this injustice, place a temporary halt on enforcement until a fair and equitable solution can be found. Thank you. Can I present?
Next, you could turn that in. They'll distribute that to us. Next person?
Hello, everyone. Name is Gordon Michael Migo, native and resident of Hawthorne since October 8th, 1952. Hope all is well with everyone. And I wanted to congratulate all those that were reelected or elected to their various positions here in the city. And want to also thank all the people who are candidates running for various positions in the city and beyond. It's a monumental effort on everybody's part. And also, got to thank the voters who put in the time and the effort and, you know, thoughtfully and so, to choose their candidates and vote on the various measures that were out there. And finally, just wanted to say a very happy Thanksgiving to everyone here, there, and everywhere.
Good evening, council members, mayor, city hall as a whole, our good neighbors. Congratulations. Congratulations to the ones that was appointed. I am Lethell Williams. And we all were winners. We all were winners because we were, showed interest in moving our city forward. However, the people have spoken. Your vote was your voice, totally. And let nothing discourage you, even be ashamed for to have someone banner. Banners don't make you win. Your interest in the community makes you win. You all are winners. We all are winners. We still, as a whole, must move this community forward. Let no one try to distract you, because when you're anointed and appointed, nothing, and no one can discourage you. No one can walk into a business and say, take that person signed down. Elected office here, right here in the city of Hawthorne, city clerk office, can't touch you when you're anointed. Nothing can touch you. And I will continue to move and push my community forward because I am anointed and appointed. Even though you didn't get endorsed by someone, but I would love to really shine a little light on the Women's Political Caucus and thank them for showing interest in me and thank them for their endorsement. It was really truly an honor to be endorsed by the Political Caucus, truly. And I did do my due diligence in reaching out to Applebee's franchise that I just have for a long time wanted to come to our community. And they reached back to me. And I would like to pass the card on to the Business Connect to see if the Business Connect could reach out to them and show them the property I had explained to them, the Flanagan Group, that we have Hometown Buffet, which is the same size and entity of what they have in Norwalk. And I reached out to Chick-fil-A for the area that we have here on El Segundo and the 405 freeway, the small, empty lot that will be a really ideal space for Chick-fil-A to come and operate because they need lots of space for their drive-through. They haven't sent a card back, but if we could still reach out to them, that would be a wonderful, wonderful idea. And Lethell Williams, be ready. Be ready, community. Here we go with the same council. Thank you.
Anybody else? If not, oral communications is closed ordered. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Mayor, I have five items on the consent calendar. They're items three through seven for your consideration and approval. Item three, approval of waiver of full readings of resolutions and ordinances on Tuesday, November 12th, 2024's agenda. Item four, city treasurer requests approval of the warrants. Item five, resolution number 8496, a resolution of the city council of the city of Hawthorne, California, approving the application for grant funds from the Baldwin Hills and Urban Watershed Conservancy for the Proposition 40 funding, the Holly Park and Jim Thorpe Park Bathroom Remodeling Project. Item six, resolution 8497, a resolution of the city council of the city of Hawthorne, California, authorizing the destruction of various finance department records pursuant to resolution number 7170 and government code 34090. Item seven, resolution number 8500, adoption of a resolution acknowledging the Hawthorne Police Civilian Association as an employee organization within the city and designating the Human Resources Director as the city's principal management representative for adoption.
I move. Please vote.
The votes are in. The voting reflects mayor and council voting yes.
City manager's consent calendar. Madam Clerk, items eight through 18, please.
Item eight, approval of invoice for payment to KSI for the removal and discard of existing competition and activity pool BEC system. Item nine, construction of speed humps on 116th Street from Casimir Avenue to Spinning Avenue. Item 10, city of Hawthorne's investment report for the quarter ended September 30th, 2024. Item 11, progress payment number two in the amount of $183,373.51 due to Sequel Contractors Incorporated of Santa Fe Springs, California, for 120th Street improvements, Crenshaw Avenue to Felton Avenue, Phase Two, project number 21-03. Item 12, approval of a purchase order for the amount of $77,018.98 for the purchase of two 2024 Ford Ranger XL from South Bay Ford. Item 13, progress payment number four and five in the amount of $929,286.20 due to Doja Incorporated of Ontario, California, for the Zilla Davis Park renovation, project number 24-04. Item 14, approval of Spark Good Grant in the amount of $3,000 funded by Walmart and an appropriation of $3,000 for Hawthorne Police Department Community Affairs Program. Item 15, approval of appropriation of $66,495.38 from the OT reimbursement special events Inglewood account number 10010951956 for the purchase of supplemental law enforcement liability insurance and approval of a purchase order in the not to exceed amount of $66,494.38 for payment to author Jay Gallagher Risk Management Services LLC for supplemental law enforcement liability insurance. Item 16, professional service agreement between the city of Hawthorne and Pet Data Incorporated. Item 17, Hanger Eight Ground Sublease and Purchase and Sell Agreement. Item 18, progress payment number one in the amount of $938,879.63 due to Martinez Landscape Company of Silmar, California for general maintenance, project number 22-05. Mr. Mayor, that concludes the city manager's consent calendar. May I have a motion to approve items 18 through, eight through 18?
To the chair?
Yes, go ahead.
I want to pull item 16. I'll make a motion.
For all others?
Yes.
I'll second that. Please vote. So that's a motion for all except 16.
Correct.
Please vote.
The votes are in. The voting reflects mayor and council voting yes.
Discussion on 16, please.
Thank you. For item number 16, we have who from the Department of Chantel? I know this is a sensitive item for tonight, and I understand that it needs to continue with regards to services for licensing our pets. However, I have some recommendations that I'd like to put forth on record so that we could let the vendor know. Sure. Okay, thank you. I'd like them to assure that they are up to date with the Secretary of State. Okay. Okay, they have an item that's due since '22. Okay. Thank you. I also have licensing issues with regards to the order in which they're being allocated to the owners. I'd like to see a 30-day within the complying of receiving their licenses. Okay. With the understanding that those that are applying are also in the right and are doing due diligence with their paperwork to assure the 30-day return. So each, each person who applies for a license? Whoever is applying to Pet Data is submitting correct information, factual information, the need of information by the vendor, and the vendor is required to provide a 30-day return. Okay. Okay. I also would like to see milestones made in good standing with the vendor with regards to some of the comments on their website. Okay. Okay? And if we could do all of that and bring back to me or to the council with regards to all assurances being met, I have no problem. I will contact them. Thank you so much.
The council, so we're going to table this until we get that information?
No, I'm going to go ahead because it's sensitive. They need it before the year end to assure that we have continued services for licensing for our pets. So I'll make a motion for item 16 with those recommendations I just listed.
With all other conditions existing in the contract as is, right?
Right.
Okay, so that's an additional request on your part. Okay.
I second.
Please vote.
The votes are in. The voting reflects mayor and council voting yes on item 16.
Okay, now the city attorney's calendar. Can you please read that, Ms. Clerk, Madam Clerk?
Yes. Item 19, claim for bodily injury by Erin E. Bobenzi. Recommended motion, staff recommends that city council deny the claim by Erin E. Bobenzi. Item 20, funding request for insurance, reserve insurance, premium auto damage earth account, earthquake insurance account in the amount of $99,000 for the current fiscal year, and requests for approval of blanket purchase orders. Recommended motion, staff recommends that the city council approve the additional funding in the amount of $99,000 for earthquake insurance account, account number 25019027360046224, encumber for the same, and approve the increase in blanket purchase orders for the earthquake insurance premium. Mr. Mayor, that concludes the city attorney's consent calendar. May I have a motion to approve items 19 and 20?
I move. Please vote.
Votes are in. The voter reflects mayor and council voting yes.
All right, let's see what we got here. Just a moment. Elected officials reports. Ms. City Treasurer.
Thank you, everyone, for coming out. I just want to offer a thank you and an apology to, and I'm not sure what department went out and picked up all the signs, because I did go back out the next day to go get all my signs, but they were already removed for all of us. So I'm not sure which department, if that was Public Works or what, but thank you. I don't think anyone says it enough to you guys because that was, I'm sure it took up more than enough of city's personnel time to do that for all of the candidates. So thank you. And I do offer an apology that that had to be done on city's time. Have a good evening and happy Thanksgiving in advance.
Thanksgiving, that's right. Ms. City Clerk?
Hello, I want to thank everyone for coming out tonight. It's so nice to see everyone here. I too echo the same sentiment. Thank you to Public Works for picking up all of those signs. And I'm sure you guys probably have over in the yard somewhere just an explosion of signs and banners and things. So I also would like to congratulate Mayor Vargas. I'd like to congratulate Angie Reyes English and also Fay Johnson on winning their election. Very excited to see, you know, what it looks like in a little bit in the next couple months and see the city shape up in the next couple years. And that's it for me, pretty much. If anyone needs anything notarized, of course, you know, the notary is there. You all can feel free to call and make an appointment. As far as the food drive, that is going to be December 14th. So thank you all so much and happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilmember David Patterson?
Thank you. Want to thank the community for coming out and making your voices heard and participating in the process as always. Want to congratulate the senior commission for your successful event. I know there was a lot of, a lot of hard work went into that, and I'm glad to hear that was well, well received by the community. Of course, want to thank staff for your hard work. Of course, appreciate taking the time to support and removing all the signs out the community. I'm always kind of embarrassed to have to participate in that process of littering the community with so many signs and banners. So appreciate the help and support and get that cleaned up as quickly as possible. And want to thank our police department as well for all your hard work. I know we've had a lot of complaints about just various things, crime, homeless, a lot of kind of rubbish and, and, you know, just a lot of blight throughout the community. And over the last few weeks, I've made a lot of calls to our chief and our captains, and you guys have been very responsive. I know the community appreciates that. Want to congratulate the residents of 116th Street who are getting speed humps. You know, one of the things that I want to encourage everybody in the community to do is to reach out to your elected officials and let us know what's happening in your community and you're part of Hawthorne and what's happening in your experience. Because, you know, we don't always know and we don't necessarily have the same experience you have. And so, you know, we can't address it if it's not being brought up. So for anybody who's having any type of experience that you want to see addressed, you know, make sure that you reach out to your elected officials and your representatives to make sure that we can get those things addressed. I want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving coming up. Definitely enjoy the time with your family. And that's it.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Alex Montero?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, actually, I want to say happy Veterans Day, because yesterday was Veterans Day. And I think I'm going to ask a request that maybe next year we should do something about, you know, celebrate Veterans Day because, you know, our servicemen, you know, serve this country and they are heroes. So we should do something in a, in a city hall to commemorate Veterans Day like we do with the memorial service. So I would like to see that next year. Let's say again, thank you for the people of Hawthorne for coming tonight and for listening us at the, on YouTube and then on cable. I want to congratulate Mr. Mayor for your reelection. Well done. I want to congratulate Mr. Mayor for your reelection. Well done. Ms. English for reelection, and also Ms. Fay Johnson, thank you, and we welcome you in December, so thank you for the people of Hawthorne. Like I said before, let people vote. People decide who they want to be represent into their community, so they spoke and thanks God that the election is over, so thank you. Thank you for all of those who participate in the process. I want to congratulate the seniors, the senior commission, because they did a fantastic job. It was a lot of people out there getting information, even myself. I got some information on, because, you know, I'm getting old, right? So I got the AARP, right, card, so thank you for that. Also, want to congratulate the community service department for the Halloween extravaganza carnival. It was fantastic. We guys, you know, it was, I don't know, thousands of kids over here, so thank you for that. And I thought I want to congratulate the Park and Recs Commission because I know you guys did the Halloween decoration, right? Didn't the creation this year, Ms. Bobowa? Yeah, contest, so congratulate on that, so thank you for that. I just want to say, you know, thank you to Hotel Marriott employees for their, you know, heroism, you know, to put their stuff online when that plane crashed, and also for open their hotel for voting center, right? Because there was a voting center over there, so thank you for that. It's the first time I see a voting center in a hotel, so that was that was good. It was well done, so thank you for that. Business Connect, keep doing. You guys are doing outstanding job out there with the community, so and I know we have more coming, so keep doing that because like Ms. Latell Williams said, we need more business in Hawthorne, so let's reach out, and we continue to reach out to a lot of business, so and we have, you know, eventually maybe in January, we'll have some more news coming for this year of Hawthorne, so stay tuned. The other thing that I want to mention, you know, the Freeman Market on Freeman and and one eighteen, the owner there is going to transition, he's going to retire, and he's been there for decades, I think like forty forty years. So I would love for us to give him a proclamation because he's leaving on the first week in December with him, you know, it was him and his wife over there every day for almost more than forty years, and they're going to pass that business to somebody else, so I would love to give them some some retirement, you know, certificate, so if you guys can concur, appreciate that. The other thing that I want to mention, because, you know, I represent the city on the Clean Power Alliance, that is our community choice for electricity that is renewable. So just to give you an update, so the the fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four, you know, the the Clean Power Alliance now is the number one clean energy in the United States, number one, okay, so giving a cleaner renewable energy to our community, so and Hawthorne, of course, is one hundred percent green. And our financial is very stable, so they have liquidity of, you know, in the amount of two almost two hundred fifty-seven million dollar, and they have like reserved to one hundred fifty-eight days, so it's been going up, so we've been doing pretty good with the Clean Power Alliance. And just another update, for example, we vote last week to put two point six million dollar to the workforce development, so it's going to give scholarship and and apprenticeship to college to women's that come out of jails and looking for jobs, so we're going to put some money to invest on those to get them trained, and we're going to give money to the labor groups that do internships and apprenticeships from the electrician to carpenter, et cetera, et cetera, so two point six million dollar. And also it's going to come to some of the community colleges like El Camino, Southwest College, Harbor College, et cetera, et cetera. The other thing to pay attention, those of you who still with Edison, Southern California Edison, last year Edison overcharged the, you know, seven hundred forty-two million dollar. They overcharged the customer. Seven hundred forty-two million dollar, so they're going to do reimbursement, but they're going to do that in ten months, so keep looking for some reimbursement bill from Edison. And on a sad note, as you know, our first Latino council member Pablo Catano passed away.
When?
So so Pablo died on November third. The family is going to have a private funeral on December sixth, and they're going to allow just a few members of the community to go attend the funeral. And I'm going to be there, so I would love to have, you know, a proclamation to take to them because Pablo served this community for many, many, many years. And and I'm going to probably talk to our city manager, Von Norris, maybe for us to do a special, you know, celebration of life for Pablo at Memorial Center, okay, because he was very loved by our community. He was a council member. He was a representative, you know, from the state senate, Edward Vincent, for many, many years. He was part of a lot of boards from the Lions Club to the Moose Lodge, so I would love to have a memorial service for him, celebration of life, maybe sometime, maybe the in January or the beginning of, you know, sometime after the funeral. And the other, maybe Mr. Mayor, you can adjourn the meeting on his on his memory, and also one of our commission son died, Dick Hume's son passed away also, so if you could adjourn the meeting on those, I appreciate it. I think that's it. Oh, and Ms. English, you're going to talk about the Operation Gobble?
Yes.
Okay, so I'll let you do that. So, Mr. Mayor, thank you very much, and again, congratulations.
Councilwoman Angie Reyes English?
Thank you. Sad to hear about Pablo Catano. Let me just really quickly run down, thank you to our heroes at the Marriott Hotel for their heroism in assisting the aircraft that crashed on September sixth. We appreciate all their efforts and their assistance. I want to thank our Business Connect again for what you're doing and your efforts. Look forward to participating in the upcoming ongoing discussions to assist businesses further. Thank you. Just want to recognize Veterans Day yesterday. Thank you to all our veterans for serving, men and women alike. I have family members that are veterans, a former wife of a veteran, and so I know how important it is to recognize them every day, not just on Veterans Day, the many sacrifices. Thank you to our senior commissioners. Ms. Jarvis, thank you so much. Thank you for all your efforts to create, again, your fourth annual senior event here on the parking lot at City Hall. It was a great event. It was a great showing, and we thank you for what you're doing in your partnership, not just with the city of Hawthorne, but all the vendors that you made mention and your commitment to serve. Thank you so much. My condolences again go out to Pablo Catano, go out to Mr. Humes' son, and also to our city attorney, Robert Kim, in the passing of his mother. I want to acknowledge Hawthorne Cert, our certified community certification that just finished their third class on Saturday. It was three classes, eight hours long. I just want to thank all of those that assisted for Mr. English up at at our city attorney's office, AKA not not related, probably, but I don't know. I want to thank the cert, you know, staff, I mean, everybody. I understand it was, I participated in the in the first two, but couldn't at the very end. Thank you so much, and I look forward to recognizing all of our recipients at an upcoming council meeting, and thank you to LA County Fire for the training that they provided. Let's see, I want to thank our chief for the ongoing briefings that you provide. Please know that we do read them, although we might not respond. I see them, and also to code enforcement, the same with all the briefings that we receive. Thank you so much. I know there was a couple of residents that reached out to me on some incidents here in Hawthorne, but you know, information that I provide is just information that I'm given, and at the same time, we use discretion, so thank you. I'd also also would like to just want to provide a kudos to our voters for Prop thirty-six for passing. I know in my campaigning efforts, there was a lot of residents that were upset that, you know, we still you know, having crime, property crime, pirate porch crimes, you know, capital converter crime. I mean, I could go on and on and on and on, and I think it's just time that we take that back. And so I acknowledge everyone. Yeah, smash and grab especially. I mean, every night, it's like nonstop. But I'm glad that that we're going to get a hold of that back. And then also, you know, Prop thirty-three regarding housing. There's a lot of efforts that we're trying to make here in our city, and that was another big one. To Hawthorne voters, I'd just like to thank all of you that did your civil right and showed your your civic duty with regards to our election that just passed on Tuesday the fifth. Thank you so much to all of you, and for all the emails and texts, and I mean, I could go on and on and on and on. There is just a lot. Some good, some bad, some mixed, but I was able to respond, and that's what they value most, is that you're actually responding and you're engaging with them with regards to their questions. And so with that, I also like to thank our council colleagues in every department. I know everybody couldn't wait for this time to be over with. I think I wanted it over with too. It it just got a little bit too much, but I'm glad that I stayed on point and my messaging was exactly what the people wanted, and I didn't distract from that in spite of everything else. I look forward to getting my crown on December tenth. I'd like to have my crown, since I've been elevated, and I'm now your majesty. So I want to just thank everybody again for how you all came together at the end of the day, and we're going to be here working for you and fighting for you, and that's what support to the people, so thank you. Operation Gobble, Operation Gobble. Seventeenth annual Operation Gobble, that's going to be November twenty-first, ten AM. Y Supplies last, you must register, and you must be a Hawthorne resident. I have, yeah, I have no problem giving you a turkey. I just need you to register, and if you're not from Hawthorne, depending on how much we get, I'll be more than happy to give you to help your Thanksgiving be that much easier. Yes, everything's online. Everything's online. Everything is, you know, online for Operation Gobble. And and just really quick, there was twenty-eight students that I recognized for anti-bullying art contest here at City Hall, so I want to thank New Star Family Center for bringing those twenty-eight students on October twenty-fifth, Friday, here at council, and we honored them with recognition for their great artwork that they did, and just also acknowledging Little Company of Mary's Partners for Healthy Kids Mobile Pediatric Clinic. They're celebrating their thirty years, and I'll be with them tomorrow. So thank you so much again. I was remiss to miss the, didn't want to miss that, but thanks, guys.
Thank you, ma'am. Mayor Proton, Manny?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. I hope you had a wonderful Veterans Day. My husband is a veteran, and I want to say thank you to Fay Johnson for coming up with the idea of the banners. My husband is still getting people saying, hey, I saw you on the boulevard, so thank you for that. And I echoed the sentiment of my council member Montero saying next year we should do definitely do something as regards to our veterans, so thank you for that. Also, I had an opportunity to attend Cal State Dominguez Economic Forecast with my council members' staff, and they just talked about, you know, what we have to look forward to as it regards to the housing market and, you know, investing, and we talk about being able to afford, you know, living in California, and sadly, I just don't see it changing in terms of the costs. Things are just continuing to go to go up, so anyway, that's another whole discussion. I also had an opportunity to attend the annual healthcare conference honoring one of our business owner Izzy along with Montero. We collectively with Kewana and our city manager presented them with certificates, so that was great, and when I tell you they made us feel like kings and queens, we sat up on a table, head table, and they served us, I don't know, like felt like ten courses meals, and and so it was it was an amazing event, and I had a great time. I also like to congratulate I also like to congratulate the staff for the presentation on Business Connect. Really appreciate it. Speaking of Business Connect, we are going to have our Business Expo in Jaffir April thirtieth, so if you are a business and you want to participate, please reach out. We will be even bigger than we were last year, so I look forward to the Business Expo, and I cannot wait. Also, I like to say congratulations to Angie, Alex, and Fay on your reelection and on your election. Let me see what else I have to. Oh, most important, my condolences to Mr. Kim regarding your mother. Losing a mother is really painful. I lost my mom in in two thousand and seven, and that's something you just never get over, especially during the holidays. You really miss that connection with your your family, so my condolences to you and your family. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else? Okay. I didn't know that, Robert. My condolences too for your loss, man. I mean, I know how close you were, and that you're taking care of her. I think she stayed with you or something, so I'm sorry to hear that, brother. And also my condolences to Pablo Catano's family. I didn't know that as well, but I mean, he's a, it was a first, you know, he's the first Latino. I mean, it's significant for a lot of people because, you know, politics opened itself up to people of color at some point, and he was the pioneer when it came to that. I think after trying two times previously, so he was a, I don't know if you guys knew, but, you know, he had won, but then they magically found just enough votes, like about seven votes in the bottom of a voting bin that overturned the election against him. That's, some of you guys remember that. I mean, that's the type of silliness that used to take place back then, so my condolences to him and to Commissioner Dick Hune as well. But sorry about that, Robert. I didn't know that. Real quick, I got a couple of things I wanted to go over, but first of all, the leaf blower situation. I think there's there's a ban statewide on the gas plot, gas powered blowers, and they're asking us to use electric leaf blowers, and so in lieu of a ping paper or anything, just if you could just give us the the gist of what's going on and if we need to do anything.
So the the assembly bill that was passed a few years ago, basically as of July first, in state of California, they cannot manufacture leaf blowers or other small gardening equipment that use gas power. And and a couple of cities have have introduced an ordinance and passed an ordinance that prohibits the use of gas-powered leaf blowers. So I mean, that will be something that the council and its discretion, if they give me directive, I can come up with the ordinance for the city as well, but pretty much the overall goal of the state is by twenty thirty-five, I believe, is to just ban all gas-powered tools in gardening.
Okay, so I'm just going to simply ask you to please put it on as an action discussion item to so that the city council, my colleagues, and myself, we could just discuss if this, you know, what the enforcement would be. you know, what the enforcement would be, if we would make an ordinance of it and who would be responsible for that. Because I know that there's been some residents out there, at least one or two residents that have brought this up to my attention. And we want to be realistic with our expectations as to the enforcement of this thing. You know, if it's code enforcement, you know, they're going to say, ah, no. So what, let's say if we make it an ordinance and then they call in and there's still people running amok with these gas powered blowers. I don't want the residents to think that we're not going after it, but they're just going to probably have to call, you know, what's our, the stretch of our enforcement on this? Okay, we need to be realistic and we need to talk about that so they can hear our discussion up here. And we can take a pragmatic view on this. Is that okay?
That's fine.
Are you guys okay just discussing it? Yeah. All right, good. Thanks. But sir, you're going to just have to call it in so that code enforcement can enforce it. But see, that's the frustration. You say, you call, they come and then it's not on anymore and then all that stuff, you know? You know how it goes. You're right, Proposition 36, I'm really happy that that thing passed. I mean, I work in a jail, I've mentioned it before. And I just have some of these inmates that I teach and they just like boast about how they're skirting around the, you know, the system, getting away with things and just laughing about it. And even saying it, saying it in front of me so that I could hear as if like, you know, they get, you know, a kick out of how, how easy they're being able to get away with stuff. And I just think, you know, Proposition 36 is a step back to where we were. It's not fully back where we were. So I think it's a measured approach, hopefully ideally, now with our new deputy, with our new district attorney, to maybe go back to where we were or just get the right types of consequences for those people who are violating the law. So this is, I believe this is not the only step back to where we were in enforcing the law. I think it's an initial step. So I think we need to just move in that direction and just start seeing some results. And then we could progress further. Okay, we need to get data as to how crime is being minimized with this. Oh, I can tell you this, some of the inmates in the jail have been voicing their dissatisfaction with this Proposition 36. So I think it's already making an impact. So that I could tell you. All right, when it comes to the Business Connect, I know we talked about Business Connect and there's this big thing about, hey, you know Hawthorne's business friendly or is it not? And then all this other cities business friendly or is it not? Okay? I, I, sometimes I believe our city staff is very good and it's very efficient when processing things. When an application is complete and when all the items are checked off on the checklist of things that there's supposed, businesses are supposed to be turning in and like the developers or the construction management group that's building the establishments for the new businesses that are here in town. But obviously if it doesn't go their way, they're going to blame the city. So I think we as a city need to be very careful also as a council and as a, you know, a community to just not always, just ask questions. Ask questions as to what's actually happening with these, with these individuals that are making these complaints. Oh, Hawthorne's not business friendly. Do we know what happened? Do we know the cases that, you know, do we have an examination of the cases? Do we have case studies on each of these businesses that said that they, the city took a long time? What has been the reason? If we investigate further, if we could just take this information and just kind of come up with some type of conclusion, we can be fair and make an honest assessment of where we need to change. Many a times, many a times people have said, oh, it's the city taking forever. The inspectors and taking forever. Well, they just got some Joe Blow to like build this thing and just, what experience? They got them off the street to build this, you know, build the establishments and to retrofit the electrical and the plumbing on some of these buildings. And they don't know what they're doing. So every single time a, an inspector goes, they, they don't satisfy what's being asked of them. So of course they're going to have to go back and forth, back and forth. And so I think we just need to be very careful to say, hey, you know Hawthorne's not business friendly. Because the last thing I want to do is just to permit a business that just has like plumbing and electrical work just being held together by tape and then somebody, or somebody gets hurt because it wasn't built to code. Okay, we need to be very careful. So I just, if you can relate to the city manager that I like to see more types of case studies, please? When people complain or like the businesses say, hey, we have an issue, we have this issue, the business, you know? Okay, tell us about this, delve into it further. And tell us what the issues are so that we can make an assessment up here as a council, okay? Because I think we have a great staff too. And we need to defend our code and stand by our code, okay? The T parking, okay. T parking is something I'll stand by. You know, that has been a big blessing to the city. The community asked us to do something about parking and we did. So, okay? The engineering that took place to be able to determine what the right sizes were was correct. There's nothing faulty with that. I think the problem seems to be those people who have these large trucks that want to park it in the street right in front of their home. Okay, that's the problem right there. How about taking, you know, finding a, the appropriate parking spot of the right dimension along your street and maybe park it there? Or take that large truck, park it in your driveway and put the smaller vehicle in front of your home. Okay, you need to be able to make those choices. Now, if you have three or four vehicles, well, guess what? You know, the city wasn't designed to be able to handle large amounts of vehicles in one household. Okay, it's not on us, it's how you manage your, the parking of your vehicles. Okay? Also, one thing that I think of has been brought to my attention also is that the apartments, they have, they're starting to charge for parking in the apartment buildings. And I don't think that's fair, I don't think that's right. Guaranteed parking, you know, now they're charging for it on top of the high rents that you're hearing about. They're charging, charging for these spots. So now in order to avoid paying the park, the, the extra fee for the parking within the apartment buildings, people are choosing to park on the streets so that you have a more congestion on the streets. I think it's shameful that these, that people are greedy and these apartment owners are turning out to be greedier than, than they should. Sure, it's capitalism and all this other crap, right? But it sure is not fair. It wasn't the case a long time ago when these buildings were owned by previous peoples. So I think people need to make some choices, make sure that your car fits within those T lines. And I've gotten heck of a lot more positive feedback than like the single complaints that I get to see sometimes up here on council. So I think it's a good program and congratulations to our engineering department for making that happen. All right, so I too am glad that the election's over. There has been some change in the dynamics on the council. So I also like to congratulate my colleague, Councilwoman Angie Race English on reelection, ma'am. Faye Johnson for her election as newly elected. And I guess I thank you guys for voting me back in. It seems like that's what's going to be the case. And everybody else that ran, Marie Poindexter, Dana, Mohammed, Lethell, Luciano, David, thank you for stepping up, you know, putting yourself out there and presenting what you have as a vision for Hawthorne and just being able to offer yourself of service to the community, okay? So of course it's my wish to be able to work with my colleagues up here. The community has chosen and you have chosen and decided that you would like for this combination of people to work together, right? So, you know, that's, that's where we need to answer that mission that you have established for us, okay? Nationally, however you guys voted, whether for Trump or Harris or whatever the heck, you know? There's a new dynamic there as well, but not focusing on that. At least for me, I think the, this election has a lot of firsts. And at least one of the first that I see is that we're going to probably have the first Latino Secretary of State. That's what we're headed towards. And it'd be interesting to see how that turns out. See if there's a little bit of the Latin touch that can take care of global situations, right? See how, you know, hopefully he doesn't disappoint and he does good. Marco Rubio. Okay, let's see what happens. It'd be kind of sad if tomorrow the president-elect changes his mind, chooses somebody else. But you know, as of now, it seems like we're going to have the first Latino Secretary of State. Okay, so before we go to the back, if we can have a moment of silence for Robert Kim's mother, who recently passed away, for council member Pablo Catano who passed away as well, and for Dick Kuhn's son, if we could have a moment of silence for all of them. May they rest in peace. There's no meeting on 26th, man. Okay, Mr. City Attorney, have we established that we were going to cancel that Tuesday meeting on the week of?
I think we have. That's what I was told by the city manager who's not here today.
How about we just make a consensus or verbally right now that we're going to not have that meeting? Is everybody in? Are we good? There's concurrence, sir. So, okay, thank you. Thank you folks. Okay, all right, so we have a closed session. Madam Clerk?
Item 21, conference with legal counsel, existing litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D1. Name of case, Naomi Tomita versus City of Hawthorne, LASC, case number 22STCV3377.
This should be pretty quick, right? Okay, thank you. All right, thank you guys. We're in recess for the closed session. Let's go. Let's go. Called back to order at 7:49 PM with all members present. We've met in a closed session for a conference pursuant to the agenda listed as item 21. City Attorney Kim will provide a readout. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A report was provided to the city council. No action was taken.
All right, if there's no further... Anything further from councilmembers or staff? The meeting is adjourned at 7:50.